Good evening. It is 6:30 PM and I'm calling the Monday, July 27th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Tonight's Planning Commission Meeting is structured to allow virtual participation on Zoom or participation in person while following social distance mask guidelines. Members of the public are welcome and encouraged to participate when invited throughout the meeting. If you are participating virtually and experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the Zoom meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available live and recorded for later viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate in this evening, if you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us/join and typing in meeting ID 910-7490-0880. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you would like to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299. Your call will be muted until there is an agenda item that contains a public hearing. I will provide further instruction and notify you when you may speak. Please note there may be a slight delay due to differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer to avoid feedback. Now on to our agenda, and the first item on our agenda tonight is adoption of the agenda. Do any members of the commission have any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Roberts?
No, no changes.
Staff?
No changes from staff.
I move to accept the agenda.
All right, move by Commissioner Roberts, second by Commissioner John.
Discussion?
I guess, any discussion, any, okay. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, and the motion carries, adoption of the agenda. The next item is consideration of approval of the July 13th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Commission members, any changes? Staff, any changes?
No changes from staff.
I move to approve the minutes.
Very good.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Anderson and a second by Commissioner Wad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the motion passes. On to the third item. The third agenda item tonight is a public hearing on the application of Minnesota Medical Solutions for an ordinance amendment to Title X zoning of the Burnsville City Code to incorporate changes to allow medical marijuana distribution facilities as a permitted use in commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. City Planner Sarah Madden will provide a presentation of the item and an overview of the background report. Ms. Madden?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. So, as stated, the item before you this evening is an ordinance amendment. However, different from many of the ordinance amendments we see, this one was applied for by an outside applicant rather than something incurred by staff internally. So, medical cannabis is a use that is allowed statewide. It's heavily regulated and licensed by the state. So, currently, although the new batch of dispensaries are opening, the distribution facilities originally were limited to eight statewide. They're increasing after 2019 to 16 statewide. Staff was contacted by the applicant several months ago, kind of letting us know that they would be moving forward with locating a facility in Burnsville. It was also in the news, you may have seen that, that they announced, the two different licensing distributors in the state kind of announced the cities that they were planning on moving into. So, Minnesota Medical Solutions is one of those organizations in the state that is licensed to distribute, and they will be locating at a place, a location in Burnsville. So, the location where they're moving into is not part of what's under review this evening. It's just the ordinance amendment for this to be an allowed permitted use in Burnsville's code. So, the use as is, the way Burnsville's code is set up is that if it's not listed in the ordinance, it is prohibited. So, we do not have a definition in our code for a medical marijuana distribution facility or any sort of regulation about the use. So, they have applied in order to allow this as a permitted use in Burnsville, and we are proposing it be allowed in our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. So, seen here in section one of the ordinance, both in your background packet and on the PowerPoint, is the definition we provided of both medical marijuana and a medical marijuana distribution facility. This language has been provided both from the state statute itself as well as influenced a little by other communities that have amended their ordinance to allow this as a use. So, most communities that we were able to get some information about their city codes and ordinances have it either listed as a permitted use, or they made no changes to their code and decided that this as a use fit into something existing that they had into their code. Because Burnsville's code language is so specific, we decided to continue that specific, shouldn't have tried that word specifically, and add in a new definition. So, that is what you can see here. Section two of the ordinance, because of the way our code is set up, we do need to have parking provisions for different land use categories. So, included, similarly to a medical office or a veterinary clinic and hospital, we're proposing three spaces per 1,000 square feet. Some of the reasoning behind that is that this isn't necessarily a retail or a pharmacy location where you would, where people would, anyone would come in and browse for a product. It's an appointment-based business. You wouldn't have many appointments all at once, similar to a veterinary clinic. So, similar volume of people that would be visiting at one time. So, three spaces per 1,000 covers both employees as well as visitors to the facility. In our, Chapter Seven of the zoning ordinance covers overall general provisions. In that section, we have many ordinances. Some of those are included as extra provisions for outdoor storage, which is the CUP, and extra provisions for a accessory dwelling unit, which is permitted. So, we went ahead and added another subsection to this chapter to just specifically outline that this is now a use, and there are minimal performance standards that we've included in here related to some of the prohibited activities, which are actually, again, kind of referencing state statute. So, the direction that we are heading here is we haven't added anything that goes beyond state statute, but we are making reference to some of those provisions. And then, kind of the key areas that we are changing in the ordinance is where the use is allowed. So, it is proposed to be allowed in the B2, B3, B4, and mixed-use district. You won't see B3 in the ordinance because the way our code is set up is that anything permitted in B2 is permitted in B3. So, it's not listed specifically under that chapter, but is referenced elsewhere. The transit-oriented development district is something that we've been talking about a lot in recent months. That ordinance hasn't been fully created yet and codified, so there are no changes proposed to it at this time, but they would come later when, when staff moves or with the official transit-oriented development ordinance. So, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance as presented. This item is a public hearing, and as mentioned, this was brought forth by an applicant who requested that we change our code to allow this as a permitted use. And I believe they are available if there are additional questions, but otherwise I can stand if needed.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Roberts?
I was gonna say, this sounds pretty straightforward, is it?
Yes.
Commissioner John?
Are all the restrictions due to state laws?
Yes, we've, the Minnesota state, Minnesota's, have very detailed statutes that kind of, they have specific provisions within them about where they can distribute, how far away from certain things, where they can manufacture, who can do it, and what specifically can be done onsite at a distribution facility. So, we are making reference to that, but not including any of our own additional provisions, since it's permitted and not a conditional use.
All right, I don't see any other questions from the commissioners, so I will open the public hearing at 6:40. Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the telephone who would like to speak to this item?
The applicant is available if they would like to make any additional comments.
I would welcome that if they want to.
All right, it appears he is on, but he is muted. So, Mr. Johnson, if you could unmute yourself, please?
About now.
Perfect.
That's great.
Okay, sorry about that.
Mr. Johnson, if you would state your name and address for the record and then share what you would like with this.
Sure. My name is Mark Johnson. Business address is 1330 Lagoon Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55408. I am the Vice President of Corporate Real estate for Virial Health. Virial Health is the parent company of Minnesota Medical Solutions. And as Sarah mentioned, we currently operate four dispensaries in the state. And recently, the legislature opened that up to allow us to now operate in the even districts. We're currently in the odd districts. Same is true for our competitor relief line. We're very interested in Burnsville. This is a really attractive location for us in terms of access for our patients. We have a signed lease contingent on the approval to operate legally under this ordinance. We do have plans we'll be submitting to the city very shortly, building plans in terms of how we'll build out the space. But as Sarah mentioned, it's more of a medical-type doctor's office setup. All our patients must have a medical card and a prescription from an authorized physician. And then, we also staff each dispensary with two full-time pharmacists. So, they're to help consult and, you know, find the best medicines for our patients. That's kind of it. In a nutshell, if there's more questions or you need some more information, I'd be happy to answer those.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, whereabouts are you going to be located at?
So, the location is in Birdside Plaza. It's just off of Burnhaven Drive and County Road 42. It's a strip center. There's a buca, the people out in the parking, out in the, is an outlaw out in the parking lot. Hopefully, that gives you a general idea of where it is. It's kind of southwest of the mall.
Thank you for choosing Burnsville. I just wanted to mention that. Really appreciate bringing business here.
Absolutely.
All right, that looks like all the questions for Mr. Johnson. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak to this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing at 6:43. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Roberts?
Is everything else there? I'd like to make a motion then.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the ordinance as presented.
I'd like to second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion? All right, I just want to echo what was said here by Commissioner John. Thank you for taking a look at Burnsville. I did talk with a few people in the area who are happy not to have to travel as far to get their prescriptions, so I think this will be a very good location, like you planned it out. So, with that, I will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries. And I voted aye, by the way. All right. So, that brings us to item number four, which is a discussion on the Planning Commission Work Plan Item, the solar ordinance check-in. And I believe Ms. Gueros is going to be going over this. Ms. Gueros, you have the floor.
Thank you, commissioners. The, this item is on the Planning Commission's work plan, and it has been annually pretty much since the ordinance was adopted in 2016. What happened is there was about a two-year study that was done by the Planning Commission, starting in 2014. It did also involve presentations and work with the city council at that point in time to put together our first solar ordinance. I guess it, we had a solar ordinance, but it pretty much said, "You can do solar," and that's about it. So, thought that there might be some things that should be added to that or provide directions, so this ordinance was created. There, at the time that we created it, there was a panel, triangular panel, that was available and manufactured, you know, at several locations throughout the country. And the consensus of the Planning Commission and council was that they kind of liked having, you know, those and a certain configuration of those panels. So, we put that in the ordinance. And then, and then after we adopted the ordinance, manufacturers quit making them. So, we had some issues where we had some companies and property owners that wanted to install solar, but they couldn't meet the ordinance or had difficulty. So, we did an amendment back in 20, I think, 17 or 2018, basically just reworked some things. And since that time, we really have not had any issues that have come up from either property owners or various installers. And we did include in the packet just a brief graphic. And to date, for this year, 2020, we have done six permits, but I just approved another one today. So, I'm sure that that will go up as the year comes to an end. Last year, we had 22 residential installations and then five commercial installations. And that was the most that we've had since we've been tracking these. We have one installation that is a commercial installation by the MVTA Transit Facility, and it was actually incorporated as signage years and years ago. So, we have been, you know, operating with solar and having solar, and that's been something that's been very positive and I think deemed important by the public, too. So, with that, just wanted to advise the Planning Commission that also the city adopted in 2009 its first sustainability plan. And we are updating that plan this year. That's primarily being done through our Natural Resources Department and Sue Vast with a consultant. And as part of that sustainability plan, there have been a lot more items that have become kind of a regular operating procedure, if you will, and solar is one of those. Last year, the city worked with the Metropolitan Council to become part of this Soul Smart program. It's something that's kind of comparable to if you're a green cities, a green step cities type of thing for environmental or sustainable things. Soul Smart is something that is geared towards making sure that communities take care of or try to alleviate any obstacles for folks getting solar permits and then just to kind of get the word out and become, you know, a solar use community. So, as far as the solar ordinance, what staff is suggesting to Planning Commission, and this is totally up to you because it is your work plan item, but because we now are part of Soul Smart and we do actively, I mean, we have a section that deals with solar energy as part of that sustainability plan, that at this point in time to continue to work with solar on the sustainability aspect of it, and then perhaps just remove it from just an annual review by Planning Commission every year on your work plan. And with that, I did include in your packet the information. You saw this last year as draft information before, and then we did get the Soul Smart designation. So, we do actually have these solar handouts and information links already available on the city's website. With that, I'll turn it over to commissioners.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, is there discussion or thoughts on staff's proposal to take this off of our annual work plan? Any commentary on what we've seen over the last year? Commissioner John?
I think it makes sense that, especially if this be, being a part of this new plan, that we don't really need to have it on our plan going forward. It seems like kind of a double whammy that way. And, yeah. So, I guess I can make a motion. That's, unless somebody else had something to say. That we, we move this ordinance or this from our current plan. I guess I don't even know how to say it.
Actually, it's not a public hearing or something of that sort. So, just want to, you know, provide that that's the direction of Planning Commission. Then when we bring your work plan item back to you, you know, when you start planning for next year, and just address it at that point.
So, without the formal motion, is there anybody opposed to setting this aside? No, not at all. I think we can certainly look at it if, you know, something comes up in the future, but we've looked at it pretty extensively over the last two years or longer. And we've got the literature out there, so I think that we've kind of done what we can do for now.
I'm pretty sure if something comes up, they'll let us know.
Yes. Okay.
Yes, we will.
So, I think we're fine moving on to other items on our work plan, then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so agenda item number five is a discussion, again, on the Planning Commission Work Plan Item Development Review Process. And this is, again, for informational, educational purposes, so there's no need for action on this item. And Ms. Madden will be providing presentation on this item.
Thank you. And Deb, please feel free to interrupt if you have something to add. But, so, last winter, when we were going over items that would be on the 2020 work plan, one of the things that came up as just a what-if is if we gave a little bit more of an educational background as to what sort of planning processes go on behind the scenes that aren't reviewed by Planning Commission and council or any of our other volunteer commissions. So, obviously, our job is to be here and to present things to the Planning Commission and land use applications that involve formal approval by the city council, but we have other duties and developments and buildings that you see go up in the city that are not related to any sort of a land use application and don't go through the public hearing process. And so, I'll kind of start from the top, and then we'll move into just generally what, what kind of work we do. So, the laws that kind of bound our profession go as high as the federal government, and then there are also rules within the state, not just from, by statute, but by divisions within the Minnesota government that have rules that we are the enforcer of, in a way. So, we work with these organizations to, to practice their, their rules and their statutes, but we are kind of the bottom line that when residents or business owners in our community are working with us to enact some sort of change on their property, that we are kind of that first point of contact. So, part of our job is not just knowing the city code, but knowing Supreme Court decisions that relate to the field of planning. For example, a lot in the past two years, there's been discussion on the sign ordinance and how we must meet a Supreme Court decision about content-based signage restrictions that are within city codes. So, as high as that to something like the Minnesota State Statute, following the medicinal marijuana statute, things like that, as well as some of the variances that you see come before. The Planning Commission are related to DNR regulations on shoreline provisions, occasionally things about digging or filling in the floodplain. All of that kind of leads back down to us as the issuing authority for these conditional use permits, where we get feedback from other state agencies. So, our provisions, again, come from the Land Planning Act for the state of Minnesota, which helped to create the Metropolitan Council, who is the governing body who requires us every 10 years to complete another comprehensive plan. All, everything that's in the comprehensive plan implements our zoning ordinance as well as the kind of measures that we have to meet each year and report on. So, there are city council policies that reflect things that aren't in the ordinance and that aren't in the comprehensive plan. And then, they're called, they used to be called the ends and outcomes. Now, they're called the strategic priorities. So, those are the specific city council goals that we are given that change every few years as council kind of turns over with the election process. The Burnsville in Brief is a monthly reporting that we provide for all of the other departments at City Hall and for the city council to review of everything that we've done that month. So, those are just kind of some of the ways that we share with the community at large, what we're doing, which may not get reflected to you as volunteer commissions, but that gets shared with the city as a whole and our elected officials. So, broadly, the job of the city planner is kind of the steward of two sections of the Burnsville City Code. So, that's Title X and Title XI. Title X, of course, is the zoning ordinance. We are the interpreters and the creators, in some ways. You know, I've brought forth in the last six months, six ordinance amendments before this commission. We do about six or so of those a year. We work with the city attorney on those interpretations for code cases or for just general questions that we get from residents or business owners. The ordinance is what requires us to have public hearings, to publish in the paper. That all comes from state statute and is reflected in our ordinance. Title XI is the subdivision ordinance. From that is what comes the requirement to plat on properties. For example, we see plats come before this commission whenever someone applies for a building permit on a lot that's not platted, and our ordinance would require that lot to be platted in order to construct that structure or to provide a land use clearance. So, to do a CUP on an unplatted lot, have to plat that lot based on the subdivision ordinance. There's also an administrative process for lot combination. I mentioned it at our last Planning Commission meeting. It's called the waiver of subdivision. That's a staff-led process that we can do a lot combination or division or lot line adjustment on two pieces of property that are within the same plat. So, let's say there's a, for example, with last meetings, there's a one lot within a subdivision that can be split into two because it's a lot of record and, or two lots, we could have combined it to one as long as they were in the same plat and nearby. So, that process, the city planner approves it, and then it's stamped by the city clerk and filed with Dakota County, and they would accept that as a valid survey of subdivision. So, primary responsibilities of our department. So, this, here with us this evening is Beth Weber, the Community Development Assistant. So, she is not typically at these meetings, but is kind of taking over as we do some of this coordination with the Zoom technologies for our virtual meetings. Beth has, is the first contact and the admin for both the Planning Department and the Economic Development Department. So, what you're seeing here is actually only a list of things that she maintains for planning, does not include any of her economic development duties. So, Beth is the first person that people talk to when they have a zoning question, whether they come into City Hall or if they are calling. As long, along with being our admin and kind of guiding our projects along and being the person who collects and routes plans to the different departments, she also administers her own programs through the ordinance. So, she, there are certain permits that only So she, there are certain permits that only Beth signs off on. She is the administering authority for those, as well as all zoning letters. Zoning letters are usually requested as part of title work or change in sale, so those are frequently requested by our department, and she processes and signs every single letter. Public data requests that come to the Planning Department, anything related to a FOIA request that has anything to do with a piece of property, whether it's zoning, property history, comes to Beth, and she administers those public data requests. As I mentioned, some of our permits, she does all of the research for auto dealers' licenses. The state requires a city planner to sign off on an application for an auto dealer license, so Beth does the research and we sign off on it based on her research. She assists us with general research questions. She does all of the GIS for the department that is at least at a manageable level before it gets moved on to our IT department and her GIS coordinator. So the development project map and the commercial property map that are seen on our website are fully maintained by Beth or the Community Development Assistant, whoever's in that position. So she also works on coordinating with anyone who wishes to incorporate a group home in the city of Burnsville. We do not license or administer any sort of authority over the group home. That's completely done by the state licensing authorities. However, they always want to call and make sure that it's okay. So she handles all of those calls, and it's typically either the owner of the home, occasionally it's someone from the state that just wants to confirm the language that's in our ordinance that relates to these, even though we don't have any authority over the use as a whole. She also does all of our documentation and backup of all of our Planning Commission and overall planning files dating back to the 60s. So she is the steward of those documents. And that's just her planning duties. So so for Deb and I as the city planners, this is kind of the things that are beyond what we do, that are the CUPs or PUDs or anything that you see us bringing forward. So we are the co-chairs of the Development Review Committee, so we meet bi-weekly on all development applications that come in. A development application are the ones that come for this group, as well as any building permits that are kind of above and beyond typical building permit review. So we're responsible for the comprehensive plan and the long-range planning of the city, as well as all of the short-range planning, like those daily building permits that we receive. We review all commercial building permit applications for the use, for the exterior of the building, most residential building permit application, not necessarily a roofing permit or a siding and windows permit, but additions to the home, decks, sheds, gazebos, anything on the exterior of the home outside of siding, we review. There are several long-range planning areas outside of just the general comprehensive plan that come up pretty frequently. So the Minnesota River Quadrant is one of those areas. Within that, there's the quarry, the McGowan Properties, which are the previously closed landfill, some of those soil remediations that are going on in that area. I'm sure you've seen the equipment on, off of 35, so that's soil remediation. And then the gateway design standards. So the Minnesota River Quadrant does have its own long-term planning efforts. So each project, building permit or otherwise, that comes through in that area, we have to go back to the, is it the 2010 comp plan or 2020 maybe? And we have to go back to look at those design standards from the older comprehensive plan that regulate those lots when they come through, because there is an effort for those properties to redevelop at some point in the city's long-term planning goals. Kind of other areas you see a lot with the Burnsville sanitary landfill, waste management. We review everything that comes through for the Xcel Energy Black Dog Plant, as well as Centerpoint Energy, who you've seen me bring forth two projects in the last year. And then, of course, the normal things that you see that come before you, the planning developments, rezonings, CUPs, interim uses and variances. We are also the administrator and the contact for outside parties that want to talk about cell towers and antennas, the floodplain, environmental planning and some of that sustainability. It goes kind of part and part with natural resources and with the Planning Department. So along with them, when they get in plans for native plantings in residential properties, we help them administer that program, kind of on the technology end with our land use reviews. Chicken licenses, we review every chicken license that the city ducks are coming up. We review every chicken license that the police department gets. Housing policies and programs kind of falls under my umbrella, so Deb and I do have the same job responsibilities, but we kind of take different focus areas. So policy and housing falls under my umbrella, and some of the environmental long-term projects fall under Deb's umbrella. Permanent sign permits fall under me. I'm the administrator of the sign ordinance and all sign permits, so any exterior sign in the ground, I review for easements, utility lines, things like that, and I'm the final authority on that. We also frequently have meetings with developers, landowners and business owners. You know, 20% of the time, that turns into a development project where it comes before the Planning Commissioner City Council, but sometimes we're working behind the scenes with projects that never make it to development application stage. So we're part of their pro forma process, is meeting with us and finding out if this is something that works for them. And then, as you've seen over the last year, ordinance development and ordinance interpretation. Sometimes those are really large scale. With the transit-oriented development ordinance, that was a really large-scale change that's still in the process. Rezoning all those properties after the comprehensive plan amendment, that's a big process in our ordinance. Tonight's ordinance amendment, smaller, but it's still a big change that changes the shape of our zoning ordinance. And we review the zoning ordinance and try to update it many times a year, and at least one time a year, we try to do a catch-all and get some of those little things off of our list that we need to change. So building permits, we review, as I mentioned, every time they come in. So along with kind of looking to see that the use that they want to do is allowed within the zoning ordinance, every building that comes in, we have to look at everything that you see in our staff report. So the landscaping and the building materials, setbacks, height, if it's changing the use from one to another, is it a use that's in that PUD? If there is a PUD, if it's not, they might have to amend the PUD. Parking, the grading, the retaining walls, or location of walls and fences, the materials of those walls and fences, every building permit. So it's the same stuff that we review for a development application, but it's a situation where we have the authority to approve it rather than it being a land use clearance that goes before the City Council. Again, review of permanent sign permits, and then zoning permits are for accessory structures that don't quite meet the threshold for a building permit, but that they do get reviewed to make sure that they're not in any setbacks or easement and that they meet our material standards. So other things that we do, we're kind of the, as well as with Beth, as the kind of the steward of all of our permanent data that we have for data requests. Laserfish is our internal database that we, the whole city uses for all of our old documents and new documents too. So we make sure that every file that we have is tied to a parcel identification number as well as an address, and when that changes, we go back and make sure that the history of that is reflected over time. We review gas tanks that are located outside when those come in. We redo, review sexually-oriented businesses and their regulations, which is part of the police ordinance, but are parts that we administer for the land use. Liquor stores have spacing requirements in the city of Burnsville, as well as in some areas, they require a land use clearance. Home occupation, home-based businesses, they're the ordinance that regulates whether you can have a business out of your home is within the zoning ordinance. So we regulate that and provide that information to people that are wanting to start a business out of their home. As mentioned before, we review all of the police department's chicken licenses, transient merchants, so rug sales, firework sales. Most often, they need a CUP in order to be located where they are. The ones that you see that are existing in the city got their CUP many years ago, but in the off chance that there's a new one, we review that, as well as their permits are issued by Beth every year when they renew their permit. And then we coordinate with outside agencies. So currently in process, Metropolitan Council regional plans, the comprehensive plan with Dakota County, any traffic studies they do on county roads within the city. One of us is on the committee for that, so currently I'm on a committee for a traffic study for the entirety of County Road 42. And then legislative processes. So we review and comment on proposed legislation that's going to go before our state legislative groups, and then our Community Development Director occasionally attends hearings at the state to provide comment based on city point of view and staff point of view. So I can answer some questions if you have it. That's what we do.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Ward?
That was a great presentation, thank you. City planners control the world.
Or at least the city.
I do have a couple of specific questions. One is about plating. Like we make, you know, if you want to, if a lot isn't platted, you have to get it platted in order to develop, but is that, is that common amongst all cities or more unique to Burnsville? Do you know?
It's common amongst most cities, except that they usually have them plat before they develop. That is different here in Burnsville. In the 70s and 80s, councils at that time wanted to be Burnsville-friendly, and so they thought that, well, that means that they shouldn't have to plat, which is great because it gets them in quick. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't collect any park dedication fees, because that is the only time we can collect park dedication fees is with a plat. Also, it doesn't give you the ability to have right-of-way and trails and those types of things dedicated on a plat. So a number of years ago, it's been within the last 15 years because it happened while I was here, probably 10, 12 years ago, as, you know, we get more and more developed, there's less land, and it's like, huh, well, we have some shortages, we're not able to really provide for parks and these types of things. So the council, when they adopted the subdivision ordinance, added a provision in there so that when there is any land use clearance that's required, and those are the things that come before you, conditional use permit, variance, planning and development amendment, et cetera, that if the property is not platted, that they need to plat at that point in time. So that's what generates it. And then at that point, basically, the city is able to collect park dedication fees, and then if they need right-of-way or easements or something of that sort, they do that. It's not fun telling a property owner or a business owner that has a building that was built, you know, 40 years ago, ew, by the way, you need to plat.
Yeah.
And these are the fees that go along with it, and they're like, what? But this building's been here for 40 years. But that, that's what we do, and that's primarily, primarily the reason. Usually, you plat upfront and don't, you know, you don't approve buildings and whatnot.
Yeah.
But that's kind of the short history behind that.
Oh, thank you, yeah. I was curious about that. I do have one other question. You mentioned that 20%, about 20% of the kind of development project, projects that you, you know, initiate, that you talk to, move it all, move all the way through the process, that means 80% fizzle out, is that right?
Yeah. Or either they, we find a way for them to be able to go in somewhere administratively, or it's something where they, maybe they locate in another city, or maybe they just don't get that tenant for their space, and so they, or they don't get that buyer for their land. And we have, you know, we'll have meetings with people ahead of time to make sure that what they're, they can know what they're getting into.
A lot of times, they're just kind of looking around too. They may have, you know, several communities in which they want to direct clients, and they're just looking for information. So we do a lot of, a lot of inquiries and research for folks.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
The other part of what we do, and you're probably aware of this, but as the planners, we're really the coordinators for projects, development projects, and we're the coordinators for the Development Review Committee, which are, which is comprised of staff members and consultants involved in development reviews, like our fire departments represented, engineers, natural resources department, police, building inspections, planning, natural resources, whatnot. So what we do is we coordinate that meeting process, you know, or that review process for these plans and projects. And then also, the departments will then give us some comments or some conditions when we're writing our planning reports to Planning Commission and Council, and then we consolidate and put all of that information together into the planning reports. So there's been, by the time an application gets to you, there's been a lot of work by a lot of different staff people and consultants, and then we kind of coordinate that process. And we have some software that helps us do that. You might hear us refer to TrackIt, or it's changed names many, many times, but we do have some software, and Beth is our, is our primary person for, for helping us to coordinate all these projects and things and keep everything on track.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, because I have to say that being on the other side of, throughout different cities, getting applications for stuff in the past, coming here and doing this and seeing what you guys do, the presentations that you give, and this is kudos to you, are well above what I've seen from other places that are just different. And so when you guys present stuff and we get the materials, I'm pretty much assured that every time we get that, we're pretty extensively informed on what's going on. So it really helps out when we want to discuss, to have all that information, and you guys bring that to us, so very much a thank you for what you guys do. Yeah, it helps, it really does help. It's confusing at times when you get a lot, but knowing that you guys did the legwork and that you're comfortable with what you're giving us, sometimes makes it easier to go through this a little easier. You know what I mean? Because there is a lot to go through, and we don't have that much time to make a decision sometimes. So for what it is, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner John?
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the presentation today. I think you should take this tape and present it to people as they come on the Planning Commission, because you learn so much just listening to everything you go through through the sections, and I think it really helps. So I appreciate that, and thank you for everything you do. Is it just the three of you that do all that?
We have Regina and Jenny, so we have our other staff, but
Wow.
Very impressive.
Thank you. And one thing I didn't mention, so just timing-wise, so with a building permit, the staff here in our building inspections department, they try to get turnaround for residential building permits in two weeks and commercial in four weeks. We usually beat that, but that's kind of the, you know, max goal for turnaround for a building permit. For our development review process that comes before the City Council, that's a 60- to 90-day process. When there's a plat or a comprehensive plan amendment, it's 120 days or more, so it's a pretty lengthy process to go through. It involves, we get the initial plans, we have comments on the plans, we send them back, we get revisions. We usually, in some cases, we get six revisions before we come up with the plans that fit comes to the public hearing. So and each time those plans come in, we have to go back through the entire checklist of the code again to see what changed on them. So it's kind of a, it is a lengthy process, I think, and it scares some applicants when they see that if they apply on this date, they're not going to, they're only maybe going to be before the City Council on one date, but that is because we try to, at least the Burnsville way is to be very thorough, and we try to do all, everything for the building permit upfront. So by the time they get to that building permit stage, most of what we're waiting on is legal documents and filing at the county. So that's kind of the reason for that, and the fees that are collected are part of that too. It covers staff time for all that gets put back on the applicant. The City Council, probably many, many, many years ago, decided that the cost of a private development would be covered by the applicant itself, and it's not, it doesn't come out of general funds.
And a requirement to review those deadlines is set by the state.
Yes.
Right. So we get to keep track of all those dates too.
Yeah.
Just forget something.
So before the 60 days ends, we have to send a letter, so we don't need consent for that. We can just send out a letter that's signed and scanned with proof that we emailed it and mailed it. And then to extend beyond 120 days, we do have to have them sign, and they sign agreeing to a specific date, and they can change that date. They can say, well, you said in this waiver that I'm signing that you would for sure have it through council by this date, I'm going to have it through council by this date, I'm going to cross that out and put a month before, and that's what I agree to. So then it puts us, we have to get stuff in, and of course, there is the legal process, too. We have to notify neighbors within three hundred and fifty feet. If it's a development project nearby, a residential neighborhood, we typically require or ask them to host a neighborhood meeting that we attend as a, just a viewer. And then we publish in the paper as well. So all of this is heavily timed, and if we miss one deadline, it pushes us back because of the way the paper works and when they will accept public notices. So it's all very detail-oriented, the schedule. So we kind of move in cycles.
Something that's unique for Burnsville, too, and I've, I've worked with some thirty-some different communities over my career and, and different processes, but for Burnsville, what is truly unique is they really do work to get people through in a sixty-day timeframe, not in, you know, however, most communities will send out a letter the day they receive the application saying it's going to be extended for another, you know, two months or three months or whatever. Burnsville doesn't do that. Another unique thing about Burnsville is that the city council approves templates, if you will, for our legal documents. So they've taken a look over the years at, like, the standard development contract language, which would go with a subdivision, the standard language for a plan unit development amendment, agreement, you know, those types of things. And it is very unique. I've never seen this before, where it is really, the, we're intended to get items from Planning Commission the next week to City Council. That's really unheard of in most communities. Usually, they have a city attorney drafting those legal documents each and every time. That doesn't happen here. Here, the template's approved and staff, you know, we fill in the, the details of it, and they're, they're not even reviewed by the city council. So that saves time and money for applicants on, on those ends. And another thing we do routinely is bundle applications. You know, if somebody wants to plat and do a PUD amendment, we try to bundle everything so they only have to come in for, you know, one Planning Commission and one City Council meeting. There are a lot of communities that do not do that, and they have it spelled out right in their ordinance that they don't do that. So the timing takes quite a bit longer with other folks. So I guess I just wanted to let you know that. And you, in terms of, you know, the unique thing about plating, there are, there are some really, you know, other unique things that I think really do save the applicants time and money and, you know, get them through our process. And I think that's appreciated by, by most of the developers that you talk to or applicants. That's it.
Any other questions, comments?
All right. I just want to comment, too, I really appreciate the work that you guys do for Burnsville. I mean, we are so lucky to have you, the three of you, and you said Regina as well as Jenny. And so thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to the city. I'm going to review your list a little bit more because I, I don't know, I'm just fascinated by all of the work that you do, and I think that, you know, it, it's a very difficult position that you're in where you are helping draft ordinance, you're helping enforce ordinance, you're helping citizens, you're helping developers, you're helping businesses, and sometimes things don't always go as you expect. And I think that you've shown a really, a really good, thick skin for a lot of the, the things that do come up and conflicts that do come up in any of those things. The other thing, and I can't remember if you said this, you have to work with consultants a lot, it seems. And I think that with a variety of projects, whether it's reviewing ordinances or looking at the Burnsville Center, or the heart of the city, or the Minnesota River Quadrant, or working with consultants from Dakota County, that Dakota County's hired for County Road 42. I mean, you are constantly creating good relationships for Burnsville, and I think that's awesome. And I'm a little jealous, you must get to meet a lot of really cool people.
Yes, I do.
Very cool. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I agree with Commissioner John, this should be something every time we bring on a new commissioner that we run through. I know the commissioners all get some pretty thorough training that some of you have been involved with in the past and that our city attorney's been involved with, but I think, I think it's worth patting yourself on the back every once in a while, too, and bragging about all the good work that you do. So thank you so much. All right, so that will bring us to agenda item number six, which is updates. Commissioners, do you have any updates? Staff, updates?
All right, so previously, it was advertised that our next Planning Commission meeting was going to be on Wednesday, August 12th. There was some moving around with the primary, and we are back on our normal Monday, August 10th. So hopefully that doesn't impact you. But that will be your next Planning Commission meeting. And then the public hearing item from earlier this evening will be on the August 4th City Council meeting. So.
Yes, that's, yes.
Deb, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things for August 10th. We have got the Kramer Quarry Development Stage Planning and Development coming before you, and that's the one to expand mining on the east and south west. They received concept plan approval last year, last year or earlier this year, I don't recall, but this is the development stage part of it. So that is what's on the agenda in addition to, if Sarah, it's her building expression.
Possibly a quick discussion about building expression.
New type of signage, I E.
What is it?
I don't know. How do I describe it? Exactly. New type of signage.
New type of, potentially, is it a building material? Is it a mural? Is it a sign? Because I mentioned earlier this evening that our ordinance, if it's not listed, it's prohibited. We, we, we need to address this because it's come up as a request, and so it is a work plan item. There's not going to be an ordinance at the next meeting, but probably a discussion to learn more about the topic for all of us, so.
Wonderful. And I did want to ask, I, I saw that the city council took up the issue with Dr. Wallen and his driveway. I don't know if all of the commission members have had an opportunity to see the results of that, but would you provide just a brief update on, on how that went last Tuesday?
Yes. We received word that Councilmember Keeley wanted to pull the application off the consent agenda. And then when we got to the meeting, the applicant was there. He had provided a letter to the council that we just got that night, just kind of identifying the process and whatnot. The, there was discussion at the city council level. I don't know, all I can say is that they, they voted four to one to approve the variance. Coming up with practical difficulties, there was discussion there, and the city attorney actually drafted the language for that. The council discussed that they thought that the ordinance should be looked at in terms of driveway width, and that folks with three-stall garages in particular should be able to have wider driveways. And so they kind of came up with, that's kind of the rationale behind it. The mayor dissented. We did have three of the council members, you know, indicate to the applicant that it was a very difficult position to be put into, you know, because they had stated, as part of their review, that they did know, and they were advised not to do it, and went ahead and did it anyway. But the, that's what the vote was from the city council. You may want to take a look at the meeting and, and go from there. I think from the Planning Commission's standpoint and from a staff's standpoint, we followed the law, which is what we're charged to do. And then the city council, it would be more helpful if they would let us know kind of their thoughts so that we could, you know, try to anticipate some things, some things that we've discussed at a staff level. I'm not sure how this would be, but we had discussed possibility of, instead of doing variances, because you do have that practical difficulty thing, you know, maybe we bring these things forward to, as a zoning ordinance amendment, and that way, at least you get the background information on why the ordinance is there, and then this is the application, and this is what they'd like to do, and then, you know, you can forward recommendations that way. Is this really difficult with variances? They're probably the most misused things that cities do. It would be great, you know, if the law were, if you want to do it, then you get a variance. Unfortunately, it's not. It's these practical difficulties that, that we need to deal with, so. But the city council had some of their ideas, and, and that's how they came up with rationale to, to vote to approve it four to one, so.
So is there an option, if, if we want to further discuss this with the city council from a Planning Commission thing, or individually we want to do that, to ask them really, the underlying, what, you know, not from what you're just telling us now, but all the details, based on what we saw and what they saw, how it changed so dramatically, you know, from what we looked at? How do we go about that from a Planning Commission? Do we have to set up a meeting with them? I don't know what the actual...
We do have, there is a liaison from the city council to the Planning Commission. We could invite him to, you know, come in to meet with you. I think, I mean, you always have the opportunity if you want to. Your citizens, you know, in addition to being a commission member, to, to contact council members. But yeah, it would, that's why I say, it really is important for the council to have clear direction so that we're all, you know, hopefully moving in the same, same direction here.
I would, I just have probably four questions that are going to be huge, to ask, why this because now we have this, or now we have this. So if this now happens, where does it come back to us? So I want to find that out. Not only is that person who lives in Burnsville, but also part of this commission here. Because we are, we were way opposite, obviously, of what they're, you know, and that's their vote. We had our vote. But I just want to make sure, because we've never really had this to happen where it was so opposite, and I'm just curious how we present that. So going forward, maybe a liaison would be able to answer those questions, I don't know. Is that something that has to be formal?
I don't think so.
Doesn't have to be televised? It doesn't have to be?
I don't think so. I think we could ask, you know, if you want to, as the city council, you know, if they want to have, like, a joint meeting to discuss things, we could, you know, work on that. It's really, you're, you're the commissioners, so you let us know what, kind of what your thoughts are, what you'd like to do, and we'll work on setting that up.
I guess we could kind of go a couple of different options. We could ask to, you know, be included in one of their work plans to have a discussion on this with the entire city council, or, or one of their work sessions. And the other option, have the, the liaison come to one of our meetings for, you know, one of these discussion-type agenda items where we kind of talk through it. I mean, I, I certainly think the conversation would lead to, you know, maybe this specific instance, but it'd be nice to be able to, you know, from their perspective and ours, kind of, try, try to avoid this in the future. That being said, I want to echo what Deb said, is, and I was, was kind of prompting this with my compliments earlier. You do have to work through some ambiguity. See, why did I pick that word? And, and, and sometimes you don't always know, you know, what the final results are going to be. So I really appreciate your ability to, to kind of work through these things. And, and I want to echo what Deb said. Staff did everything they should have done, we did everything we should have done. I mean, our job is to really take a look at the projects, take a look at the ordinances, and apply those. And I think that staff in our commission can be proud that we've done that. So, that being said, the mayor did, in the meeting, express a lot of the same concerns that we had as far as setting a precedence of, you know, shooting first, apologizing later. And I think that she made that very clear, so. Anyway, Commissioner John?
I just was going, I was very frustrated when I watched that meeting. I, I found it appalling to, like, the mayor had said, shooting first, and then pushing forward. I don't think it sets a good precedence for the city. And for staff, actually, it just, it feels like it was kind of pushed from the back. I don't want to belabor the point at all. However, I think it would be good to have a conversation about these things and to understand, because like Commissioner Roberts said, we were on the complete opposite side of this. And it's very frustrating to watch, it really is. And I, I literally lost sleep over it. I don't say that as a cliche, I literally lost sleep over it. It was very frustrating.
Me, too.
Worried about the direction of the city, and I wanted to put that out there, but thank you guys.
Yeah, I think a liaison is okay, but I still would like to ask certain questions of the people who were there. Just, there's certain, just certain questions to ask.
Okay.
And I'm going to bring it up now, of course, but it would be nice to have them actually give their opinions of why they voted the way they did.
Certainly. We can check with, with the city manager and see how best, you know, we'll explain what kinds of things that we're talking about and how is the best way to get that done, you know, work session, or have someone come here, whatever, and we'll bring that back to your next meeting.
Yeah, and I, and I do, do want to respect the fact that we are a recommending body, and, and so I think that to have an open dialogue with them is, is a very good thing to understand kind of their thought process on some of these things. Commissioner Anderson?
Did you mention that one of the council members tried to have it removed from the agenda?
Yes, it was Councilmember Keeley.
Did they say why?
Remove from the consent agenda, so that they could discuss it.
So that they could discuss it. Not other than, we didn't know, except for the discussion when the council was discussing it. And it came up that they thought that there should be other standards, you know, and people should be able to, if they have a three-car garage, should be able to back straight out. So they wanted to look at the width standard, along with, I guess, everything else that they'll be looking at. But yeah, I, I agree, it would be, there, there are better, better ways, I think, just to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction would be very helpful.
Commissioner Anderson, just stop me if you know this, but basically, if we vote unanimously, those items typically go onto the consent agenda, which is a laundry list of fifteen, twenty items each, each council meeting, and typically, it's just one vote that they approve, that consent agenda. There, all the backgrounds typically there, the city councillors are expected to, you know, understand and read through all of that information. And the city council members, as well as members of the public, have the ability then to request an item to be pulled from the consent agenda and given further discussion. And so that's what happened. They, we had approved it, or rather, denied the variance unanimously, and so typically, that goes on the consent agenda, that is what happened. And then Councilmember Keeley, you know, as, as he's allowed, asked for further discussion, and that's what happened.
Okay, makes more sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I, I will say, just for now, the one thing as far as reviewing the ordinance change that did not come up in the city council meeting that does concern me is what the city engineer commented on, and that was, you know, if every three-car garage property going forward were to go to a forty-foot driveway, what does that look like for our stormwater sewer system, and what will the, you know, future cost for the city be on that? Obviously, all things that'll be researched as the ordinance is reviewed, but that is, you know, that's the top of my mind, yeah. Commissioner Roberts?
Question number one on my list is, what type of Pandora's box are we opening?
Yeah.
And can I go out on my driveway right now and make it a forty-foot, because I've got three-car garage?
Commissioner Roberts, I would suggest, if you're interested in doing that, watch the city council meeting from last Tuesday.
I was out of town.
Because, because there were, there was actually conversation on that, so. So, all right, thank you so much for the updates. Thank you so much for everything you do. And with that, I will stand for motion to adjourn.
I would like to present the motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Anderson, thank you.
I'll second the motion. I wanted to give you the opportunity.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. And opposed, motion passed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to put you on. I didn't mean to put you up.